Good evening and welcome to the City Council's March 26th meeting. This is our first teleconference meeting with all City Council, City staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. First, I'll start with our roll call. Vice Mayor Combs, City Councilmember Kat Carlton, City Councilmember Betsy Nash, and City Councilmember Ray Mueller. And the staff that are present, Starla Jerome Robinson, interim City Attorney Kara Silver, and our City Clerk Judy Heron. Judy, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I appreciate the introduction. This is Judy. I just want to confirm that Councilmember Mueller is online with us as well. Ray, if you could just confirm that?
I'm here.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, sir. So going forward for this first live and webinar City Council meeting, I appreciate everyone who is in attendance. The mayor will conduct the meeting as she typically does in the chambers. She will call each agenda item. In this case, we don't have any regularly scheduled items, so staff presentations will not be called upon unless requested by the council for a consent item. The mayor will then request questions and comments from our City Council. The staff who are authors of those items will then come on the screen and answer any questions or make any comments as needed. They will then disengage their webcam and their microphones. Just a reminder for everyone on our panel here that if you do have a microphone, make sure that it is not on while you are not speaking and that it is engaged when you are live and speaking. With our public comment, we've been accepting it via email as well as voicemail. And at that time, I will be displaying it on the screen for, again, whatever item it is related to. And again, I just thank you guys for your time. And here we go.
The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. Under justice for all. Liberty and justice for all. Our next item on the agenda is the Proclamation, Recognizing the Importance of the 2020 Census. Recognizing the Importance of the 2020 Census and encouraging residents of the County of San Mateo to promote and complete the census to ensure a fair, accurate, and complete count. Whereas pursuant to the United States Constitution, every 10 years, the federal government is required to count all residents in the United States, citizens and non-citizens, through a national census. And the next national census scheduled to begin April 2020 is central to our democracy. And whereas a primary and perpetual challenge facing the U.S. Census Bureau is the undercount of certain population groups. California has a large percentage of individuals that are considered traditionally hard to count. And there are over 100 languages spoken in the county. And 34.8% of residents in county are foreign-born. And whereas the data is collected by the census determines the number of seats each state has in the U.S. House of Representatives and is used to distribute billions of dollars in federal funds to state and local governments. And the data is also used in the redistricting of state legislatures, county boards of supervisors, and city councils. And whereas California receives nearly $77 billion in federal funding that is allocated in part based on census data, and the U.S. Census is facing several challenges with Census 2020, including constrained fiscal environment, rapidly changing use of technology, declining response rates, increasingly diverse and mobile population. Thus, support from partners and stakeholders is critical, and a complete and accurate count of California's population is essential. And the census is a massive undertaking that requires cross-section collaboration and partnership in order to achieve a complete and accurate count. And whereas California's leaders has dedicated a historic amount of funding and resources to ensure every Californian is counted once and only once in the right place. And this includes coordinations between tribal, city, county, state governments, community-based organizations, education, and many, many more. The county received $228,000 from the State of California to use in Census 2020 efforts and outreach. And the county is committed to ensuring a complete and accurate count of partnering with other local government, the state, businesses, schools, and community organizations. And the county has committed resources toward a robust outreach and communication strategy focusing on reaching the hardest-to-count individuals. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Cecilia Taylor, Mayor of Menlo Park, recognize the importance of the 2020 census and encourage residents of the San Mateo County to promote and complete the census to ensure a fair, accurate count. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. The City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Public comment has been accepted electronically through the city's website as well as via voicemail messages. Ms. Heron, can you display the public comments that we've received?
Yes, Mayor Taylor, I can. This will be displayed for two minutes.
Ms. Heron, can you read the public commenter's names?
Yes, this was received from Erin Stevenson.
Does the council need additional time? Are we ready to move to the next public comment?
I will be moving to the next public comment. During the display of our next public comment, I ask that if any members of the public who have called into the meeting, if they have a public comment they'd like to share, to please use the hand that is available to them on their screen on the right-hand side. And if you raise that hand, then I will have the ability to call on you for a public comment. This public comment was received from Garrett Walton, and we'll display it for about two minutes.
Judy, I've received comments from the public that they cannot read it at home. But I don't know if there's anything we can do to make it larger.
Councilmember Nash, yes, I can make it larger. It just may be difficult to keep on one screen. But let me see if I can make it larger.
If it helps, I was able to make it larger on my computer as I would make things larger with my fingers.
Ms. Heron, are these public comments posted on our CCIN?
They might have been received on CCIN as well. These were both accepted via web form, which was set up when teleconferencing meetings were required. They will also be attached to the final minutes. And if any members of the public would like copies of these, they can be sent electronically. Going forward, I will try and work on the size, see if we can't make them larger and still maintain one page. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to see if there's any hands raised for public comment. And it does look like we do have public comment confirming that these are both public comments for general public comment and not items on the agenda. Through the mayor, may I open up public comment to our attendees online? Jen Wallison? Are you able to hear us and make your public comment?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Council. It's Jen Wallison, Menlo Park resident. Thank you for your service to the community, especially at this great time of need. I'm just speaking up to elevate the comments made by some people that have written into CCIN from Linfield Oaks that live adjacent to the Menlo Medical Building, where there is now much-needed testing for COVID-19. However, the testing tents are located right at the fence line to some residential homes. And so there has been a request to see if Menlo Medical, if the city can work with them to reconfigure their circulation in their parking lot so that families... There's a pregnant woman there and some other people with compromised immune systems that are really concerned about having the testing done in such proximity to their yards where they're trying to get their fresh air with their children. So thank you for your consideration, and thank you again.
Thank you, Jen. At this time, I'd like to call Karen Grove. Karen Grove, I've unmuted your mic.
I didn't realize that I had raised my hand. I do not have public comment.
Thank you for confirming. At this time, I see no more public comment. And turn the meeting back to the mayor. Thank you.
At this time, we will close public comment and move on to our consent calendar. Are there any items that any of the council would like to pull off the consent calendar for questions? I see one hand. Councilmember Nash?
Yes, I'd like to pull items F2 and F3, please. And, well, actually, I guess, and F6, please.
Ms. Heron, I have a question. Since I cannot see Councilmember Mueller, how will I know if he has a question?
Councilmember Mueller does have access to his microphone. So at this time, we would ask that he just turn on his mic if there is a question, comment, or if he has a consent item to pull at this time.
Okay, thank you. So with items F1, F4, and F5, are there any questions on those items? Or can we go ahead and move to approve? Vice Mayor Combs, would you like to go ahead and make a motion to move that F1, F4, and F5? Be approved?
I make a motion that the items stated by you be approved.
And I see I have a...I can't tell who's second and first, if it was Councilmember Carlton. And so, Ms. Heron, just to make sure that we are following procedure, at this point, we would vote by ayes?
Correct. Right now, we have a motion made by Vice Mayor Combs to approve the consent calendar except items F2, F3, F6. I do need a second. And then for this vote... Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Carlton, a second. I will do a roll call vote. I will call your name and then have you state your vote. We're doing this because we have one council member who is on microphone only. So Mayor Taylor, your vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller, your vote?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Councilmember Nash, would you like to start with your questions for F2?
Well, I would like to recommend that we incorporate Karen Grove's suggestions that she sent in to CCIN. And basically, that the project... The program becomes a broader assistance that may arise due to the COVID-19 virus. And I would recommend that we accept all of the recommendations as Karen Grove sent in to CCIN. I can read them if need be, but they're fairly extensive. And she did a markup of study of the guidelines.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And for clarity with the public, F2 is adopt a resolution amending the Menlo Park Tenant Relocation Assistance Program administered by Samaritan House to include tenant rental assistance related to COVID-19 and other circumstances. And just a question for the rest of the council. Have you had an opportunity to read Commissioner Grove's letter? Vice Mayor Combs?
I've read it. Yes, I've read it.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
I've read it. I just would want to hear... So number one, I mean, for transparency for the public, it probably needs to be explained how it's being amended. But secondarily, I would like to hear professional staff's feedback prior to voting on it. I don't have an objection to it, per se. I just think it's important to hear, since professional staff worked on it, what their feedback is. And so, that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Carlton?
I looked at it briefly. I don't know. I mean, it had a lot of things in it. I couldn't vote on it off the top of my head without really thoroughly going through it.
Councilmember Nash?
So I would summarize it just overall by saying essentially what it is extending the resolution to include people in housing distress due to COVID-19, regardless of whether they are renters, or landlords, or homeowners. And it's essentially trusting Samaritan House to appropriately provide the assistance needed, whether that's for utility bills or the rental assistance, but basically to keep people housed during this health crisis. And I'm also interested in what professional staff...their comments about it.
Councilmember Carlton?
As I look through the attachment, it has big slots completely deleted. It changes it fundamentally, and I do not agree. I'll vote against it. But I do want to hear what the professional staff have to say. If there's any part of that that they would like to incorporate, I'd love to hear that.
Well, maybe Rhonda can speak to that. But I...the council asked us to go through the Housing Commission. So before modifying it so substantially, I would recommend that we take it back to the Housing Commission for them to reevaluate. And I believe Ms. Grove is on the Housing Commission. So I just think it would be the right thing to do to give the Housing Commission another shot at this. And she can provide them with her recommendations, and it can get it for thorough vetting.
May I make a...
I have a question.
May I make a question? Madam Mayor, may I just say something real quick? If we're going to follow professional staff's... I mean, city manager's suggestion on that, I'm fine with that. But what I would ask is that we could go ahead and pass professional staff's recommendation tonight so that we can start getting aid out to people per those guidelines and then send it back for revision to the Housing Commission.
Okay. That was exactly what I was going to say, Councilmember Mueller. Just if this was going to delay any funds being available, what we can do to prevent that from happening. So I would definitely support that. So that is item F2. So now it's F3, adopt a resolution.
Hold on one. I'm sorry. Would it be possible to hear from professional staff, from Rhonda Kaufman, her reaction to the...if she's had a chance to read Ms. Grove's email?
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, council members. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, okay. Thank you. I do have a couple of bullet points. I'm not sure if I can screen share. There were several recommendations that Ms. Grove made. And I think they were all great recommendations in light of what's happening right now with COVID-19, which is very different than what was happening a couple of weeks ago when council authorized us to move forward to repurpose this program from a tenant relocation assistance program to a tenant assistance program to be able to expand it to provide emergency rental assistance. So let me show my screen. So there were several recommendations. And I just...a few of the top bullet points, hopefully you can see my screen, is that staff did feel were...would be helpful right now is to expand the emergency rental assistance to include the definition of shelter. So for instance, if there was a unhoused... a recently unhoused family or other household that had some emergency circumstances, as determined by Samaritan House, that they would be eligible for rental assistance that could pay for that shelter temporarily. And also, we had some other recommendations to make it easier for folks to access these funds right now, which was to eliminate the requirement that tenants have been in their units for 12 months. So that would allow people that have moved into their apartments a few months ago, or six months ago, or 11 months, to be able to access the funds. And then eliminate any other administrative barriers in the guidelines that would prevent households or tenants from rental units from accessing the emergency rental assistance. So just some administrative cleanup to incorporate those items. Some of the other items, although they're really great items that we thought might be options to consider in the future, in a future meeting, where some of the recommendations were to eliminate any income requirements. What we've done in these guidelines that you see before you is we've changed the income requirement to... Normally, we look at a whole year. What was a household's income for the past year? And we changed that instead to be the last 30 days. So that's a significant change. So somebody who has been laid off or has had a decrease or loss of income in the last 30 days could go in and could qualify, whereas they may not have before under the annual income requirement. So that will help households right away. So that would supplant kind of the no-income requirement. I think the no-income requirement could open this up to folks applying that might have other financial resources, such as savings, that they might be able to use. And then they would be accessing funds that are already limited to other lower-income households or households that don't have any income at all. So it's kind of a safeguard. And then mortgage payments. Right now, as I'm sure most council members know, there are several large mortgage holders and financial institutions that are offering mortgage suspension, including Fannie Mae. So we know that there's temporary support for mortgage holders. And then with utility payments, that was another recommendation. There are a number of programs currently in place, including the low-income housing... Low-income Home Energy Assistance Program that help with utility payments. Also, utilities have temporarily been... We've been insured by utility companies. That service will not be interrupted for non-payment due to COVID-19. And then finally, food. There was a recommendation that these funds be used for food. There are a number of food programs currently operating, including the Food Bank, Food Pantries, and other food delivery meal programs. So we thought in the short term that folks could utilize those programs. And then the council could consider whether or not they wanted to contribute additional funds or set up a different program or make a different... Provide a different grant to Samaritan House to support these other items. So that's what...where we were on these recommendations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you sharing this information with us. Councilmember Nash, I saw your hand raised.
I guess I would...those recommendations sound excellent to me. And I'm wondering if...how the rest of the council feels and whether we could move to proceed with the resolution as it's including the changes which Rhonda just outlined.
I'll support professional staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Carlton?
I'm not clear on...I need...I don't know what those changes are. I mean, you've just run through them really quickly. And I would really need time to actually think about them and not just make decisions off the cuff. I think the idea of sending it back to the Housing Commission and letting the Housing Commission vet this appropriately is something I would feel more comfortable with. And let them look at all of the suggestions and come back with a summary suggestion on the best way to proceed. So I would like to move that we... I would like to move that we approve it as it's outlined in the staff report.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I generally am supportive of Councilmember Carlton's approach. Yeah, it's hard for me to sort of holistically to see those changes that Ms. Kaufman has said would be acceptable from a professional staff perspective. And I don't even know if that is...was vetted by the city attorney or if that's just the housing...the housing team's department sort of assessment. I'd like to see that, too. But I wouldn't...I would be okay with this not necessarily going through the Housing Commission, again, given the importance of time. And so...but I wouldn't want to like actually see a staff report with these changes than to sort of in this moment, you know, be trying to make these line changes or line edits and not being able to like take in the... or line edits and not being able to like take in the, the whole picture of the changes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. I had a question for Ms. Silver regarding Vice Mayor Combs' comments and what you just heard being vetted with the, with our legal staff. Do you see any potential concerns there with what Ms. Kaufman just read?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Kaufman and I did talk about these changes earlier today. I did have a legal concern with respect to the original changes that were proposed in terms of eliminating virtually all requirements. Since these are public funds and they need to be administered pursuant to established criteria, we wouldn't want a completely open-ended process that, that's appropriate for foundations and other charitable trusts. But for this particular use of funds, we do need some established criteria. And I think that the criteria that was suggested by housing staff is reasonable and is something that we could easily amend in the program guidelines and perhaps even bring that back to you tomorrow. I know that we are, we do have a closed session scheduled, so we might be able to add a consent item to, to that agenda as well. And you can actually, you can see the actual language then.
And so if, if we made changes that were recommended, what you just stated, that was recommended by Ms. Kaufman, without the income being, the income criteria being removed, that wouldn't delay anybody that would need to access it like in two days from now? Because my concern is delaying this.
Correct. So there are different ways to proceed. We could have something to you by tomorrow. And so that certainly would not delay things. We could also just, you know, pass the resolution that you had, that's attached to the staff report, and then come back at a later time with amended language that incorporates these three points. So it's up to the council.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Silver. Councilmember Nash, you had your hand up earlier. And then after you, Councilmember Carlton.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone that since now we are not having commission meetings, so that it would be difficult to have the Housing Commission review it. And I.
Councilmember Carlton?
Sure, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear before. I was actually making a motion that we approve it as written in the staff. I have no problem with what staff wrote. I think it's fine, and I'm happy to, to do that. So I'm sorry if that was confusing. I was, I was making a motion for, for approval.
Okay. Vice Mayor Combs?
I'll second. But, but I would, based on this, like an amendment, that this will come back with the, with the changes that Ms. Kaufman outlined, but that we could sort of see it, again, like I said, more holistically.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Were there any other questions on this item? So we have a motion. Councilmember Nash?
I would just request that we, I would like to see it go through as quickly as we can. I prefer to go through with a broader approach to, given the current health crisis. But I'm perfectly fine with approving it as it is. But I'd like to know when we can get it back. I was, thought that it might be worthwhile waiting till tomorrow and wait, and passing it with the changes tomorrow. I don't know what the best way to do that is. But anyway, I will, I would vote for it today, but I'd like to see the changes come back as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Nash. Ms. Heron, the first in the, the motion that was made by Councilmember Carlton was with the changes that staff recommended. I thought it included it, but it did not. So the motion on the floor is to approve as presented. Is that true, Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Thank you. So do we have a second to approve the item as it was presented?
I seconded with the, the request or the caveat that this would come back before us with the, the changes that Ms. Kaufman outlined. And so I don't know if that's a friendly amendment that I'm, that I'm asking for in the motion. And so I'll defer to Councilmember Carlton if she wants to agree to, to those terms.
I'm, I'm, made the motion that we approve it as written, and I'm completely happy to have edits, you know, for suggestions come back to us, sure. But that's, that's going to happen. Why, it's not necessarily, needs to be part of the motion, does it?
I believe so.
Like, even come back sooner rather than later. So I don't understand. So your, your friendly amendment is that we will review potential edits in the future?
Well, the amendment is specifically a direction to staff that we want to see it, to, so it's formalizing that request as part of this amendment, that this will, will come back to us with, again, with the, the changes as outlined by Ms. Kaufman.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I can't say, I would vote yes or no because I don't know what they would be, but yes, that's fine.
Thank you so much. And I believe just to, oh, go ahead, Mayor Taylor. Well, I just wanted to, just to clarify what Councilmember Nash was, Nash's request was, was to have the, have it come back sooner because we aren't making any changes to it. Is that correct, Councilmember Nash? Okay. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So with that.
I'm sorry.
Oh, continue.
Just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to follow up with Councilmember Mueller. Because I don't see you on the screen, I forget. Councilmember Mueller, are you okay with where we are?
As you know, Mayor Taylor, I'm not shy. I'm great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, hearing that, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Carlton, a second with friendly amendment by Vice Mayor Combs, by roll call vote. Mayor Taylor, may I have your vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yep.
The motion passes unanimously.
And Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm just confirming, I mean, since we're living in chaotic times, it is acceptable to the council that we don't run it through the Housing Commission first so that it's not delayed.
Yes.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
With the direction that is no slight to the Housing Commission, that we appreciate them and we would like, but it's due to wanting to expedite this, not out of any disrespect to them?
Understood.
Now we can move on to the next item on our consent calendar, which is F3.
Mayor Taylor, I do want to note we did receive public comment for this item through our web form.
Okay. Can we take public comment first?
Yes. Again, I apologize for the size. This is from Janelle London. Again, the size of this font and what you're seeing on the screen is something that we will be working on for our next meeting. This will remain on the screen for another minute or so. Thank you.
We are nearing the end of this public comment. All right, Mayor Taylor, I'm going to return the meeting to you. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Nash, I'm just going to read what item F3 is so the public is aware. F3 is to adopt a resolution 6552 approving the sustainable vehicle fleet policy and address recommendations number one and number two in the San Mateo County Grand Jury Report titled Electric Vehicle Adoptions in the Cities and Counties of San Mateo. Councilmember Nash, you pulled it, so the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. So there have been several public comments that came in, including the one that we just read from Janelle London, which are recommending that the 5% annual reduction should be from a baseline and not from the prior year. And the second recommendation is that the city should add an EV charging installation requirement to this policy and make installation of the charging infrastructure top priority. And I was interested in what our sustainability manager thinks about those two changes. Thank you.
Is Ms. Lucky present?
Yes. Hello.
Hi, councilmembers. Mayor Taylor, happy to answer your question, Councilmember Nash. So where we are with the baseline is that we, we can certainly add in a baseline. We do that with our greenhouse gas inventory for community emissions. And I believe Ms. Al Madrall, who was the writer, our author of the staff report, I talked to her earlier, and she, she suggested using 2018 and 2019 as the base year because obviously this year, due to COVID-19, our numbers will be very different. So that would be our recommendation if the council wanted to add a baseline to the policy, baseline year. And then the second part about prioritizing infrastructure. So the staff report outlines basically what our fleet division has analyzed, what we would need in 10 years if we fully transitioned all of our 109 vehicles. That includes even heavy-duty trucks and vehicles. And basically, it had, it's come down to needing at least three fast-charging stations, ones where we can expand the electrical outputs potentially for future needs, and nine Level 2 chargers. So that's what we're working toward already. And so that's, and we're currently doing an electrical analysis at City Hall to determine how much electrical capacity we have and how much more we would need to fill that, that gap. But as far as prioritization, I'd probably defer to our interim Public Works Director Nikki Nagaya to talk about the impacts of COVID-19 and how, because this would be considered a capital improvement project, and how that would fit in with these potentially backlog projects.
Thank you, Ms. Lucky. Councilmember Nash, do you have any other questions?
So I, I think it makes sense to put in a baseline just because data is always good and the 2018, 2019 consumption makes more sense than now as was stated. I am, I personally think that we need more charging infrastructure, but we're getting into such a different time right now, given everything that's going on with the health crisis and presumably the economic impacts of that. But actually, I'd love to hear from Ms. Nagaya about that, but I'm, I'm wondering whether that, we want to actually put that into the resolution.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Taylor, everybody hear me okay? Okay. So I think, yeah, my, my answer is dramatically different tonight than it may have been a month ago. So I think the concerns you raised about just the overall ability of the city to prioritize any project right now for construction is, is our main concern. And so I think if we start to resume to normal, we'd be happy to put electrical charging infrastructure on our priority list. But we just need to assess the overall situation over the next few months in order to, to see how we proceed with all construction projects. And that would include the addition of EV chargers. So I think while we recognize that that's a major constraint of our, our fleet transition, it's something that we just want to evaluate in the context of the overall priorities for the city and what we can reasonably accomplish going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Nagaya. Councilmember Carlton?
Sure, I remember a few years ago, we got a grant and got to put in a bunch of chargers. And I was, it was the, the white elephant kind of thing. Like, I was so excited that we got the grant. And yet, it was so expensive to tear it up and lay in the infrastructure to put in the, the chargers that we had. And it kind of comes down to making sure that when, as, as I think it was Jackie Spear put it, the dig once policy, that if we're going to put them in, we make sure that we put in as much as we think we're going to need. And then it's like we're doing with the conduit, and then we can add as many as, as we need to. If we're putting in seven, I'd like to see us put in 17 because we have so many vehicles that we're going to be replacing over the years. And rather than piecemealing a little here and then coming back, and then piecemealing a little bit more, I'd rather put in a tunnel of power into the correct places, being strategic with this, and then deal with the add-ons later, right? Do you see what I'm saying with that? Nikki?
Yeah, sorry, I just had to unmute myself there. Yes, I think the, the idea of doing pre-wiring and laying conduit all, all makes sense. The, the piece that we just have to evaluate, as Rebecca was describing, is what our electrical capacity is at any given site. And that's one of the main constraints we have right now at, at City Hall and why we're undertaking the evaluation that Ms. Lucky described. So, yeah, I think we can definitely keep that in mind as we're making investments. Quite honestly, my, my biggest concern right now is just the overall ability of our, our team to oversee the construction with, with where we are. So I think we can keep, keep the dig once idea in mind as we go forward.
I, I would like to see this because we say we're going to keep things in mind, and then things happen and it gets lost. I would love to see it in there with the proviso. We appreciate this might not be able to be done right now because of, of what we're going through with, with COVID and, and infrastructure issues. But, but having it written in there, and having it written in there as a placekeeper for us to go back to helps us not forget that that is a target and a major goal, not even a goal, it's a major necessity for us if we're actually going to be transitioning our fleet. I would put forward that we, we put it in there with the proviso that we understand that it might not be implemented immediately.
Councilmember Carlton, for clarity, were you talking about the both provisions that Councilmember Nash brought up? Or just the one?
I support Councilmember Nash on both. I, I think that she has a good point, and I support that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other follow-up question? Go ahead.
While I'm here, I also sent out as just an information item that I had found a truck that's all-electric. Just as a question, when we approve this, if we approve this, is all that written in stone? Or if we find out next week that an all-electric truck is available, we can make the decision? Or we give Nicole or whoever? Or we give Nicole or whoever is making that decision the ability to move to an electric vehicle instead of a gas-powered vehicle? How written in stone is this when we vote for it, in terms of the fleet?
So the policy is going to be followed as vehicle purchases come before council. So if there's a vehicle purchase that's going to be going forward, and there is an electric vehicle that's available in less than three years, and we have supporting evidence and documentation that that is capable to meet our performance needs, our safety needs, and, you know, those two criteria really are the core of it, then I would say that you can then look at, if there was a vehicle available next week that met all of those criteria, you could, we could look into that purchase bringing forward to council. So all vehicle acquisitions are above, for the most part, above the city manager's authority, so they come to city council.
Okay, so like, there's listed an F-450 that needs to be replaced by a gasoline one, so that's not saying this is going to be done, it's just saying this is an example of what we have ahead for information and planning purposes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Sorry if it's-
Are there any follow-up questions for staff?
I'm tied in this room while my son is video-
So Councilmember Nash, do you want to make a motion? Councilmember Nash?
Yes, I was going to make a motion that we move ahead with Resolution Number 6552 and add the 5% annual reduction from a baseline, which would be 2018-2019. And also that we would add an EV charging installation requirement pending, I don't know quite how to, I'm interested if anyone has suggestions pending approval, given the economic constraints. Please help.
How about pending staff availability?
Well, and economic situation, certainly. And perhaps Councilmember Combs, I think, had a-
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I don't specifically have verbiage to help you out. I actually had a clarifying question. Would these other, I just want to confirm, these other projects with regards to electric charging infrastructure would come before council, correct? Are, no, are we giving sort of staff a carte blanche here? I just want to sort of clarify that issue.
Thank you, Starla.
So this is just setting an intention, it is not carte blanche. Any purchase would come back to council, decide.
Vice Mayor Combs, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just, and so I would just, my direction to Councilmember Nash would be as proactive as you want, with your wording or language, it's totally, you know, so there's a built-in sort of lever that we'll look at and worry about the economic, you know, situation for this city at that time.
So I guess just that we would add EV charging installation to this policy as, actually, I guess, to add an EV charging installation requirement to the policy to come before council for, as any part of, as part of any proposal coming before council.
Ms. Silver-
Suggestions are welcome.
Ms. Silver, you came on screen, so I believe you have some input or directions.
I was just going to suggest some verbiage-
Okay.
-to implement Ms. Nash's suggestion, if he wanted to just add at the end of the direction saying, "As appropriate in light of economic and resource constraints at time of purchase."
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Nash, do you want to make a motion? I'm sorry, Councilmember Carlton, did you have a question?
Oh, I thought she had made a motion. I was going to second it.
Oh, okay. So you did make the motion already, Councilmember Nash? Okay. So at this time, I believe I have the motion correctly as to, so Councilmember Nash has motioned to move ahead with Reso 6552 and add a 5% annual reduction from a baseline from 2018-19, and as appropriate in light of economic and resource constraints at time of purchase, and as appropriate, a installation policy. And I will follow up with the city attorney before creating the motion for the minutes. And at this time, I have a second by Carlton. Mayor Taylor, may I have your vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
Yeah.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
And Councilmember Mueller?
Yep.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item that was pulled was F6, receive and file the investment portfolio review as of December 31, 2019. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I would, just wanted to follow up and ask staff if the Finance and Audit Committee, which saw the report at their February 4 meeting, provided any comments.
Vice Mayor Combs, were you, oh, there's Mr. Jacobson, excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and councilmembers. So this went to the Finance and Audit Committee. They did not provide any comment, but they were not asked to provide any comment. It was sent to them for their review.
My understanding is we've received no public comment on this item?
I have not received any public comment via the web form or voicemail.
Then I would go ahead and move that we receive and file the investment portfolio review as of December 31, 2019.
I'll second. Thank you. I have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Nash, a second by Mayor Taylor, to approve item F6. Mayor Taylor, your vote? Yes. Vice Mayor Combs, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Heron. We'll go on to our next item on regular business, item G, and we actually removed G1, the consideration of an urgency ordinance to shelter the homeless, has been removed from our agenda. The next item are informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's efforts to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. And at this time, our informational items are the next agenda topics. And also, that's H1, and then H2, City Council and Commission and Committee Annual Attendance Report. Were there any questions or comments on the informational items? Mayor Taylor, I would like to give the public a moment to digitally raise their hand if they have public comment on either of our two information items. Seeing none, I return the meeting to the mayor. Thank you. Councilmember Carlton, you had a question?
I just wanted to do a shout-out and say thank you to our housing team. On the HCD's report that was in the staff report, says HCD SB 35 statewide summary said that Menlo Park is one of only 28 jurisdictions in California that has met its prorated lower, the very low and above moderate income arena housing for the previous reporting period. And sometimes I think we need to stop and celebrate that we're moving forward, maybe not as fast as we always want to be, but remember that before 2015, or, sorry, I think it was 2013, we hadn't had anything larger than a duplex built in this town since 1974. So we're playing catch-up, but I wanted to say thank you to our team working on housing and our staff for leading us in, I think, a positive direction.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Did anybody else have a input? Councilmember Nash?
Yes, I would just add, this was remarkably normal council meeting with staff reports and all, and I'm really impressed that everybody got it out, and that we were able to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. The next item on the agenda is, I believe, city council reports. Councilmember Carlton?
I sent everyone a, some information from the National League of Cities, and also I sent you a link. They're offering a resource, not only on what other states are doing, the jurisdictions are doing for the COVID-19, but also some of the federal legislation that's going through. So just send it as a resource, so it's there. And is it appropriate? I don't, I don't know the agenda. I looked online, it's not posted for the meeting that we're having tomorrow. I had some questions about the legal updates that we received from Kara Silver. And do I ask that now, or is it more appropriate to ask that tomorrow?
Ms. Silver, can you respond?
Thank you. We can respond to some abbreviated questions, if you have any tonight. We can also separately agendize a matter tomorrow, if you wanted to, if you had something in particular that you wanted to have a more extensive discussion about.
Councilmember Carlton, did you have a follow-up?
Sure. I was so excited that the federal funds were passed. I was sending emails to our representatives in DC pressing for this, and then I was very sad to see in the report that you sent, that at this point, it appears to only help large cities, which is very disappointing. And I was just wondering what you meant by that, and if you want to expand on that now, that's fine, or we can talk about it tomorrow. I just wanted to better understand what those did and what's lacking in terms of its ability to help the smaller cities throughout California as well.
Yeah, so I don't have detailed information on what the threshold size is, but there has been a stimulus, the most recent stimulus package certainly allowed funds for states, but then it also included some additional funding for larger cities. And I don't know what that cutoff is exactly. I can provide you with further information. And of course, it's subject to change. We hope that there will be amendments that will lower the threshold size, that would allow cities like Menlo Park and other peninsula cities to access those federal funds as well.
Councilmember Nash, did you have a question for Ms. Silver?
No, that was, it was just covered.
Okay.
May I report out, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
So I just wanted to report out, so I'm not sure the community knows, and I think it's important that they probably, that they know, to the extent we are, every day, with respect to COVID-19, up until today, councilmembers have been attending on all hands for electeds throughout the county to be working on the COVID-19 crisis. That's being moved to once every other day. Staff and councilmembers are working tirelessly to try to make this, well, I should say, staff is working tirelessly, I can't commend them enough, to try to lessen the impacts on the community, but just wanted to say that we know those impacts are tremendous. And if people have questions, please reach out to all of us individually, but there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes to try to get things ready for the next, for the next stages, where hopefully we come out of this shelter in place and move to a transition period to try to get the community thriving again and the economy moving again. But I wanted to commend my colleagues for the work I've seen on that, and for staff for what I've seen, and candidly, our community for what I've seen. A lot of change in a short period of time, and people have made huge sacrifices, and it's just tremendous with the way they've done it and the good nature that they've done it, to pitch in, to try to take care of everyone. So I didn't want the moment past without explaining what's been happening behind the scenes, and also, candidly, all the volunteers, the CERT team, the fire district, all those who are working with all the nonprofits. It's just been an amazing thing to watch the community come together, but also cognizant of the fact of how difficult it's been. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Was there any other reported, report outs? Councilmember Nash?
I was wondering if you were planning to report out about the renter. I will let you do that, assuming that you're going to report out about the renters and the Samhitaill. Now, I can't remember the name of it, the new fund that's been-
Samhitaill Strong.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just for clarity, it has been, it has those daily meetings. So every day, there, it's following up on Councilmember Mueller's comment about the daily call. And this week, I believe, I think it's only been this week where Councilmember Nash has stepped in for Vice Mayor Combs on that call, but Samhitaill County, after the Board of Supervisors' approval, announced a $3 million fund that is already started through the name, I believe it's Samhitaill Strong, Samhitaill County Strong. The website is smcgov.org, and there you can find the frequently asked questions that has gone on with the week and a half, I believe, of calls that we've had. So it's captured a lot of the questions that councilmembers and our supervisors have asked. Also, there are, there was a past eviction moratorium throughout Samhitaill County. The county has chosen to take the lead on that, to take the pressure off of the cities. But I know that that was a huge concern of people in Menlo Park. We did receive several CCIN comments about that last week and this week. What I wanted to also report out on is that I'm sure we have all been receiving a lot of phone calls and emails, and also texts from concerns from our constituents. I wanted to address three questions that I've received. One, which was, I had to think about, what do you say? I got a call from a constituent that was walking, his father, I believe he's in his 90s. The concern was, the street was full of children, and so his father didn't- The concern was the street was full of children, and so his father didn't feel comfortable taking a walk. And so just some things to be mindful of is your space, your surroundings, and to make sure that you're allowing for everyone to use the open space, provided that there is some social distancing. But the last thing we want are seniors to be confined to their house when they can at least take a walk down the block. So it was, it was concerning to hear that. The next question I received, actually from a few different people, was related to the eviction moratorium. And so I'm hopefully though watching, if not, we'll make sure to get an email to you or a phone call to let you know the eviction moratorium did pass countywide. The third question that I received is a private, I think, I'm not sure if it was a piano teacher, but it was a private teacher that was concerned that now that their business is gone, that there wasn't any source of funding that would help them in their circumstances. And so the, I know that SAMCEDA has put out some information, and I, I hope you can go to s-s-a-m-c-e-d-a.org, there's some information there, and there's also information at smcgov.org. And I saw two hands, I'm not sure whose went up first, but Councilmember Carlton.
That's, you can go first if she wants. Okay. Um, I've actually been really surprised how, not only the meetings like this, my, my son, you might hear in the background, is actually doing a remotely done taught drumming class. And one of the, the interesting things that may come out of this is that we find a way to address not only environmental issues, but traffic by people learning that we can do a lot more by working remotely than we thought we could. And the other comment I wanted to say is, I've spoken to a couple of people who have literally taken every penny they had in their parents' retirement fund to buy a apartment, a little apartment building to keep that going as the family business, and they're terrified that they're, they might lose it with not necessarily getting rent. And we want to make sure that people don't lose their houses because they can't pay rent, but we also want to make sure that the owners of the buildings don't lose the buildings as well. And I don't know how we address that, but I was going to throw it up there as, as the knock-on effect from, from what I'm hearing from people as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Yes.
I wanted to share with you guys, yeah, I wanted to share with you all that the daily call, the governor has amended the Brown Act now, so everyone can attend that daily call now. And they did, they did address the fact in the last daily call meeting that there's legislation being looked at for landlord relief as well.
Councilmember Nash, did you still have a question or a comment?
Okay.
Vice Mayor Combs? I believe that was the last item on our agenda, so our first. So I'm sorry, I forgot, city managers' report.
That's all right. So I just wanted you to know that, I know that we've received a number of concerns about the placement of the medical testing tents at, on Middlefield, and our staff is actively working to create a different circulation pattern. So we understand the concern, and that we're working with Stanford and others, so I think that will be resolved by tomorrow, hopefully. I know that a number of you are very concerned about the farmer's market and the layout of the market. We've also been actively working with the farmer's market to both broaden their placement in the parking lot and do better signage, so we're hoping that that will work. We've also been working with the manager of the Ivy Plaza Farmer's Market, and they've got a unique, well, unique to me, new program in mind where during this period, they can drop off bags of food, people can pre-register to purchase them, drop them off, and so there will be food, farmer's market food available there as well, and that will start April And then I just wanted, before we lose you, to confirm what time you think you're available for the meeting tomorrow. Is it nine o'clock or five o'clock?
I think Councilmember Mueller was the only one apart that didn't hear that discussion.
Okay.
I am, I am, I am available at your, just at your need. So I'm, I'm not going anywhere, my, my work has allowed me to say if there's something happening in the city, I can, I can make the appointment.
So I thought that Vice Mayor Combs raised a fair issue that five o'clock might be too late after the week that I'm sure everybody has experienced. So we could try and start at nine and make every effort to get through the issues, and then if absolutely necessary, come back to it at five o'clock?
Yeah.
Is that, is that there? Okay, all right, great. That's how we'll set it up. All right, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
Sure, I have a, I have a question for Starla. Something clicked as well when they were talking about the elderly gentleman who didn't want to leave the house because of all the kids. I received two emails from people who were upset about big gangs of kids hanging out in the park together, and, and they didn't want to call the police because that seemed kind of extreme, but they felt like people feel that it's a snow day or that it's not such a problem for kids to get together, and, and the children obviously can spread the virus from family to family as well as anyone else can. And I don't know if we can maybe very gently remind people that the, the ordinance says that family groups can come out together, but not friend groups. That kind of undermines the whole idea of not going to school. Right, I totally agree. And I know that people are reluctant to call the police department over something like that, but the police are just doing an educational campaign, they're not going to do anything more aggressive. Rebecca Lucky has been working as our ombudsman to the school district, we've been, so we've been in touch with the school district, the school districts are definitely discouraging group play on the fields, will be, and I think they'll be doing additional signage within the next few days. So completely agree, and we're doing everything we can to politely discourage mass gatherings or even semi-smog gatherings.
Councilmember Carlton?
Sure, I have something else that I need to tell you that, that pains me, but I, the friendship, the Sister City Committee had decided that we didn't know whether we were going to Japan or not, and we were going to take the group in June, and we kind of pinned it on what was happening with the Olympics, and we just found out that the Olympics in Japan were canceled. So we have contacted Japan and said, hey, we still want to come, what if we come later in the year and see how it goes? And so we're working to not necessarily say we're not going, but to say we're pretty much not going in June. So I just wanted to share that with you, that we were watching and waiting, but it's become pretty apparent with the cancellation of the Olympics, that that's not going to happen. Not in June.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Are there any more report outs?
No.
Okay. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody, thanks to.